My name is Kevin Haroff. I am the Vice Mayor of the City of Larkspur and I will be chairing this evening's regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, August 19th, 2020. And I think we're starting at 6:32 and I think we will need a roll call.
Councilmember Candell?
I'm here.
Councilmember Helmer?
Here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Haroff?
Here.
And let the record show, Mayor Way is absent.
Okay. I don't know if we can do our remote pledge of allegiance, but if we could, let's try it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. Liberty.
Liberty and justice. For all. Thank you. Okay, so I think that takes us to public comment for matters not on the agenda, comments on things that are not on the agenda. And let's keep anything that folks may want to say brief. I think we have one public comment that's already been submitted, so.
Thank you. We have one hand raised for public comment. And that is Cole Lewis. Cole Lewis, it is your turn for public comment.
Dear Larkspur City Council, I am here today addressing the council with great frustration and disappointment. I have been repeatedly asking this council to consider defunding or reducing the centric police authorities budget and have been repeatedly been told to express my views at the CNPA Police Council meeting on August 13th. On August 13th, the Police Council Oversight to the CNPA meeting was canceled over a "lack of business items." How can there be a lack of business items when we are in the middle of a national social movement to reexamine the role of police? How can there be a lack of business items when many others spoke at the last Police Council meeting inquiring about training practices, arrest statistics, and the council's budget? How can there be a lack of business items when the members of the council themselves directed me personally to public comment at the meeting they later canceled? To me, it's a blatant move to avoid community members from speaking their minds and put pressure on the CNPA to change. That is completely unacceptable. Knowing you're going to receive criticism or feedback, not only ignoring, but silencing your constituents by cutting off their ability to advocate is not how government should work. It's gatekeeping and shameful. I'm asking the two council members who represent Larkspur in the CNPA Police Council, particularly its Chair, Mayor Catherine Way, to reschedule the meeting in order to give the public its opportunity to participate in its own democracy. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else in the queue?
I see no further public comment.
Okay, well, with that, I think we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Presentations and Proclamations. I think we have an update on our Measure B pavement repair program, so maybe we can get a staff report on that.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Members of council, members of the public. Julian Skinner, I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur. And we have tonight an update on the Measure B paving program. We come to you twice a year with an update. Going to start my PowerPoint here, if that comes across.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, so this is an update. As I said, we come to you twice a year, so a lot of this is not going to be new information, but we are almost at the end of our second year of paving, so we did want to come and share with you what we've been doing this summer and then also some things to look for over the next months and years. So I'll talk a little bit about the project that's going on and then the following years. This is a shot from Paving Creekside, which was one of the first streets they paved this year, and we'll always be able to pick out this year's paving photos because all the workers are wearing masks. So this is the same sheet that we show in all of these updates. It's kind of our master plan. This is what you adopted when we presented you the Measure B five-year paving plan. It shows all of the projects listed on the left-hand side, and then we're using these arrows to kind of update as we go along. And so, as you saw last time, we did complete the Year One projects, which was the ramp and the Project One. And then we have two projects under construction now. It's actually went out as one bid, but in the Measure B plan, there were two projects. Project Two and Recon One, they were called. And then the yellow arrows are pointing to projects that are currently under design. So as soon as we start building one project, we're already designing next year's project so that we're ready to go next summer. Here's some shots from this year. This is a before and after, and unfortunately, I took the before picture from the bottom of the hill and the after from the top of the hill, but believe me, it's the same street. This is Upper Ardmore, which was one of the streets that was in kind of the worst condition. This is, we always talk about a pavement condition index or a PCI as a scale of 0 to 100 on a street's condition. This street was less than 20, so the street needed a lot of work. And here on the right, the street is now a PCI of 100 with a brand-new pavement. A couple more shots from this year's. So we were able to get some funding signs up this year. So at the entrance to Dartmouth, you'll see we've got a sign up there that lets folks know this is Measure B that they passed that funded our citywide paving plan. We're using those funds for the asphalt and all the work that goes into this project. And this is an up-to-date presentation. These photos were from today. This is up on Villa Lacumbre. So this is again one of the streets that was in not very good condition. So the photo on the left is, you can see dirt actually in the road. They've taken all of the old asphalt out and then placed the new asphalt in the street. And then on the upper right-hand corner, you can see them placing the new asphalt up on Villa Lacumbre. So this year's project's about 75% complete. They'll be on Villa Lacumbre. It's a pretty long street. They're doing the entire length of it from Alicia up to the county line over the next few weeks. This is our map of the Measure B program. The green streets were done last year. So this year, we're doing the blue streets. So we've got the Sycamore and Locust areas were already paved. And then parts of Hillview were paved, and then some of the courts off of Villa Hidalgo. And then, as I mentioned, we're also doing the red streets this year, so that's Villa Lacumbre and Parkside. The kind of the red and blue mix here that doesn't show up very well on this diagram, but these are streets that were to be paved this year that we've postponed. We did do a five-year plan, and as we anticipated, we have had to shuffle some streets around for various reasons. The streets that you see in Hillview that have the red dots on them were pushed out because we have a storm drain project scheduled for Hillview next spring. So we'll be paving those streets after we put the storm drains in the ground. And then Villa Hidalgo up in the Bonner Hill area was included in the bid this year. But there were concerns over some shallow utilities there, and we got together with a contractor and the utility company and ultimately decided it was in everybody's best interest to push that street out one year. So much like some of the other streets, we did have some streets, like sections of Hawthorne last year, that we had to defer. But they fall into next year's program. So Hawthorne was paved this year when it was originally scheduled for last year. As such, we fully anticipate Villa Hidalgo will be paved next year. I want to assure folks that if your street gets dropped, it doesn't get dropped out of the program. It just gets shuffled. And the money doesn't go away either. There's money for all of these streets. So this is a list again of those deferrals.
Julian?
Yes?
Julian, it's Kevin. Can you just explain some of the utility issues that you've got up in the Greenberry Hills?
Yeah, we have, primarily, it's an old water main that is not as deep as a water main would be if it were installed today. And there's a number of private water services on Villa Hidalgo for all of those apartment units that are also fairly shallow. And the scheduled paving operation on Villa Hidalgo is called a full-depth reclamation because of the condition of the street. And what that essentially means is we have a big machine that goes along the street and it digs everything up down 10 inches. And it mixes it all with cement, and then it puts it back down on the street to serve as a new base for a new layer of pavement that goes on the top. So it's very environmentally friendly because we don't remove and truck off a lot of earth. We kind of reuse it on-site. The issue, however, is the equipment that does that operation is very heavy, and so it's going to be taking 10 inches of the surface off. And then it's going to be directly over this old water main. And the contractor felt that he would have to do some additional work to protect the water main. And we felt that we would be better off if we rebid that out with next year's project with all of the utility information available to a contractor. So he would be able to work those additional costs into his bid rather than being an extra cost on this project. So we made that decision.
So is that water? So is that water main ours or is it the water districts?
That is Marin Municipal's water pipe. And we did discuss it with them. They did not have a specific concern with that pipe. It's not a problem pipe. They do have a lot of older pipes that are in worse condition. But they also did agree that there may be some different methods we could do out there that would protect the water main a little bit better. And just in the interest of safety, we didn't really, I think it's a 12-inch water main too. And it's a long street and it's on a hill. If anything were to happen to that water main in the middle of the paving operation, it would not be a good scene for anybody who lived there or for the paving operation. And so we didn't feel there was an urgency to pave it this year. We'll regroup and talk to the Water District and make sure the contractor has all the information available next year so they can plan that work accordingly.
And you're getting good cooperation from the Water District on that issue?
Yeah, we've been working well with the Water District, and I mean, they were prepared to be out there with emergency crews in case anything happened during the paving. But we just didn't feel there was any reason to set ourselves up for that, so.
Yeah, no, 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 and I understand. Okay.
Yeah, so the first streets on here, the Hillview streets I talked about previously, and then the industrial area, Richland Redwood. We deferred that last year because we need to do some drainage improvements there. And then, as I mentioned, Villa Hidalgo is emboldened here because that's a new deferral that just came up during this year's project. And then there's two smaller sections of streets, Villa La Paz and Cordalejo, that are kind of pending at the moment. We do have a bid out now for some storm drain improvements, and there's a couple of options on which way that storm drain could go. And so it's either going to go in Cordalejo or it's going to go in Villa La Paz. And so obviously, the street that ends up with a storm drain will have to defer that paving till next year. So these two sections, Villa La Paz and Cordalejo, one of those will be deferred to next year also. And then this year, we did have a couple of streets that had more than just street issues. Both Alswood and Rice Lane had retaining walls that were holding up the street that were in a state of disrepair. We had them evaluated, and it was ultimately determined that those retaining walls had to be replaced. And so on the left here is a photo of the Alswood Drive retaining wall that was replaced before we paved. And you can see the new asphalt on Alswood too. And then Rice Lane is scheduled to be paved next year. But for economies of scale, we decided to do the two retaining walls at the same time. It's the same construction technique, so we're doing the Rice Lane retaining wall now in preparation for paving Rice Lane next year. Again, here's our map. So this is jumping ahead to show what we're looking at for next year. So next year's streets are the Purple Street, so up in the Murray Park area. And then some on Doherty, and then a little bit downtown, which I'll talk a little bit about later. And then this is the light blue area here is Industrial and Rich, which were the streets that I mentioned before needed some drainage improvements. And then obviously, we'll come back and catch Villa Hidalgo and the Hillview deferred streets from this year in next year's project also. And then the yellow streets here are also scheduled for next year. They're yellow because they're anticipated to be more intensive construction. They'll either need to be reconstructed or they'll need the full-depth reclamation similar to what we did with Villa Hidalgo. So we'll be working with the Water District on those streets too to make sure that we cover all our bases similar to Villa Hidalgo. And then also next year, it's a separate project, but we'll be paving East of Francis Drake. So that's the light purple line over here from the city limit. Actually, from the freeway all the way out to the easterly city limit, but counties actually included the first little section of East of Francis Drake in their Sir Francis Drake project. And then the only streets we'll have left after next year will be the Year Four streets, and that's the orange streets on here. We are currently coordinating with all of the utility companies to see if any of their work on those streets has been completed and looking at opportunities to pull some of those streets forward. Most of the streets you see in orange were put in the last year of the Measure B program because there were planned utility projects on those streets. We know some of those utility projects have already been completed. So if that's the case, we will be evaluating pulling some of those streets forward and doing them next year instead of in Year Four. And we hope to find that out fairly soon because we'll be sending out notices to the people that live on those streets and letting them know about the sewer lateral issues and giving them as much advance notice as possible that we propose to pave their streets. And so I mentioned the section of Magnolia earlier, and so we've had a consultant look at this section separately because we've got some ADA issues on Magnolia too. So this is the two blocks, kind of the downtown core from King to Ward. And our consultant that's looked at this has determined that to make ADA improvements along this corridor, we pretty much need to remove all of the sidewalk from building face to building face or shop face to shop face as well as we're going to be repaving all of the street. So this was kind of moving along as a separate project because we thought we would have some different issues here. And then in light of recent events, it's also, we've been looking at this project as an opportunity to maybe do some more work in this area. We have a number of restaurants and other businesses that have inquired about setting up shop in the public right-of-way, either on the sidewalk or out in parking spaces because of restrictions on indoor activities. And so this project that would essentially remove all of the concrete and the asphalt, it gives us an opportunity to consider if we were to have some of those activities outside longer term, this would be an opportunity to make some revisions to better accommodate those outdoor uses. Not sure 100% what that entails at this moment, but it's definitely, when we're going to do a project of this magnitude, it's definitely worth taking a pause, getting some feedback from the community and the businesses while we're going to replace all this concrete to see if there's something that we can't do to enhance this corridor. At the same time, there's going to be no better time than when we do this project to make any improvements to this corridor. And again, I don't know what those are at the moment, but we'll definitely be having conversations. And I would anticipate we'll be in front of the council, having some sort of workshop down the road after we gauge some public feedback on what those might be. Here's the schedule that we showed each time, and so you can see these are the active projects. And you can see we're getting to the tail end of the Group Two paving. The ramps are finished and we're fully in design on the Sir Francis Drake and the Group Three paving. And I stole Administrative Services Director Kathy Orms' pie chart format for this slide. So this is a snapshot of the paving miles we've done or proposed to do each year. So starting up in the right corner, 2019, the numbers in the boxes are how many miles of streets we've done or planned to do each year. So it's 6.1 miles last year. We anticipate doing 4.9 this year, and then we've got the 7.4 miles and 5.5 left. So we'll almost be about halfway through the 24 miles we had planned in about three weeks when we finish this year's project. So about halfway through the actual lineal footage of streets we'll be paving. This next one shows the money breakdown as we go through the projects. And so we do have some, as I mentioned, more intense construction scheduled for the later years. So while we're almost halfway through the streets, we're not almost halfway through the expenditures yet because we do have some of the more expensive streets further down the line. So this is the proposed budget per year based on the plan and the streets that have moved from year to year as we've made adjustments. So the budgeted last year, the streets we did was about 3.4 and about 5 million this year. And then you can see the 2021 and 22 numbers. Again, there was about 23.5 million to begin with in the paving fund and another 1.5 million for ADA curb ramps. This is just showing the paving money. This is kind of the same thing, but with some tracking numbers. So we have our 2019 numbers for paving. That project was finished. Based on the Measure B plan, it was about 3.4 million. The final Measure B cost or citywide paving fund cost for that project was about 3 million. So we came in about 400,000 less on that project. This year's project, as I mentioned, when we awarded the bid, we had an unprecedented six contractors bidding on our paving project this year, partly due to the fact that there wasn't as much work going on, but also because we have a lot more streets and work in this year's project. And so we actually had 5 million budgeted for this year's project, and it's based on the awarded bid. It's going to come in about 3.4 million. So again, a savings versus what was presented in the plan. So we're about 2 million to the good on the paving costs. We did unfortunately go over on the curb ramp project, so you aggregate those, and we're still tracking about 1.4 million under budget as compared with what was presented in the five-year plan.
Good.
And so that's the end of the presentation. I'm available for any questions anyone may have.
Do any members of the council have any questions on this?
Yeah, Julian, just briefly, the Hillview work, I believe there's some pumping station or drainage work. If you could just give a little bit more detail on that because there's going to be a lot of activity there.
Yeah, so there's drainage improvements planned for Hillview. Basically, there's two components to those improvements. One is replacing the storm drains in the subdivision itself, mainly along Harvard, but somewhat also along some of the side streets. And that new storm drain will replace the old storm drains that used to dump directly out into the creek. There's about four or five storm drain pipes that discharge into Cordama Derrick Creek. Instead of having all of those discharges into the creek, we're collecting everything in one pipe. That pipe will go along Harvard, and then it will connect with Bonner Road where we're building a new pump station, storm drain pump station as part of the federally funded Bonner Bridge program. So the pump station is actually built, the concrete portions of it are built, the pumps and the pipe work and everything are currently being fitted into the big concrete vault that's on Bonner that's at the west side of the bridge. And so that pump station should be fully online, hopefully by the end of this calendar year. Now, it takes a little bit of drainage from Bonner, but ultimately, the storm drains in Hillview would be constructed next spring, summer, and then that new storm drain at Hillview would connect to that same Bonner Bridge pump station.
So Dan Helmer, I think I saw you raise your hand.
My question was answered, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, good. Anyone else? Anyone from the public on this topic?
We received one written public comment for this item. I'll read that now. This comes from Don Matheson. "We've run into a problem on our street in that the underground wires, phone, cable have reached the end of their service life, but they were not inspected or considered during the repaving project. That should be considered before repaving. Sonic says this is coming up for a lot of neighborhoods with underground utilities, and AT&amp;T are just shrugging their shoulders. We are also still having the drainage problem that I brought up to Public Works at the time of paving, FYI." And as mentioned, that comes from Don Matheson.
Yes, so we did, as part of the Measure B five-year paving plan, we did coordinate with all of the utilities, including AT&amp;T, Comcast, Water District, PG&E, Sanitary District, to get a list of their proposed projects over the five-year plan. And as I mentioned, those utilities that had projects scheduled, we pushed those streets to the final year to give those utilities an opportunity to do their improvements. And much like we have a lot of storm drains that we can't get to in a timely manner, a lot of those utilities have infrastructure that is probably at the end of its service life, but they don't have budgeting or capacity to do them at this time. And so we only are able to push streets to the end of the five-year window, give the utilities as much opportunity as possible to make those improvements. Hopefully, they're able to make them before we pave. If not, then they come back after, hopefully five years after, after Moratorium ends to replace that infrastructure. And then if the caller could send an email to me, jayskinner@cityoflarkspur.org, I can look into the drainage issue. It doesn't come to mind at the moment, but I'll certainly follow up on that.
Okay, anything else from the public at this point?
There is no further public comment.
Okay, Julian, just one question. It's Kevin. I know that the work is going hot and heavy on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard right now. Are you comfortable with the way in which that work is occurring and its implications for some of the side streets that we have jurisdiction over?
Yeah, so that county, that project is being managed by the county, but our senior engineer is in contact with the county and is attending some of their progress meetings. There are some overlaps where they come into the city jurisdiction. And obviously, work on that corridor may impact some of the side streets that are in Larkspur. We haven't received any complaints to date from anybody in Larkspur about that project specific. I understand, as I drive from job site to job site, that there are traffic controls on Sir Francis Drake and it's down to one lane at some times and kind of what I would call typical construction type traffic impacts. But certainly, I would say if anybody has any concerns or sees something that they think is out of the ordinary or think could be handled better, send us an email. We're definitely in contact with the county. We're working with them. We were kind of involved throughout the design, and we're partnering with them on this project. So we can definitely pass information along if anybody has concerns.
That's just really helpful because we're into that project now, and they're working hard. And there's a lot of traffic control going on, and just want to make sure that, you know, we're comfortable with our interaction with the county and the efforts that they're putting into that project.
Yeah, and I will also say that they are looking for feedback. They are, obviously, when that project was conceived, it was before COVID. Traffic levels were different. They were going to be doing a lot of night work. They're still doing some night work, but they are doing some work during the day that was not part of the original plan. And so they're taking advantage of the lighter traffic. But as folks get back to work and people are traveling more and the road numbers come up, it may come a time where they have to go back to the original plan. So I know they're monitoring. They've had traffic counts out there. They're kind of aware that they're taking advantage of the lighter traffic now, and so they are monitoring that.
Yeah, and my impression is that it's working out fine. I mean, it's inconvenient in some respects, but it's being managed well. So are there any other comments from the council or from the public on this topic? Otherwise? on this topic? Otherwise, we're going to move on to agenda item 3.2.
See, Councilmember Hilmer stands up, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
Just a quick comment regarding the downtown Magnolia Avenue sidewalk and ADA improvements that was mentioned earlier. I would, I would just like to ask that when that situation is reviewed by staff and council, that we also revisit the potential of looking at a parking district for the downtown. The, if we're going to reorganize the, what amounts to the living room for that for Varkspur and it's downtown and using some of the right of way in a creative fashion, I think it's also valuable to look at the collective parking supply in a creative way and figure out ways to provide the parking resource so that all of the businesses and and structures in the downtown, many of which occupy their entire property without any onsite parking, can be considered in an optimal way so that we can take advantage of the opportunity that the redesign of that area presents. Thank you.
No, I think that's, that's, that's very helpful, and I think it's an important thing for us to keep focusing on. Okay, anything else on this topic? So let's move to 3.2 wildfire hazard mitigation update from Central Air Department Acting Chief Ruben Martin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Haroff, members of the council, member of the public. Thank you for having me this evening. It's Ruben Martin, Acting Fire Chief for the Central Marin Fire Authority. Just kind of wanted to come in today and give you an update of where we're at and wildfire mitigation efforts, especially since the passage of Measure C this March by the taxpayers. And it's kind of an opportune time since we have all these fires kind of burning around us to kind of talk about what we're doing here locally to reduce our threat. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I've got a little PowerPoint presentation. Maybe not. Allison, do you have a copy of the presentation there by chance?
I do, yes. One moment.
There she goes.
Perfect. So like I mentioned, it's an update for what we're doing here with the fire department since passage of Measure C. We're going to start off with kind of doing a big global overview of kind of reminder of where we get our local funding for of the projects that we're able to accomplish. Next screen, please. So as we recall, Measure C was approved in March of 2020 by the voters of Marin County, understanding that the threat of wildfires impact us here within the county of Marin, just as it does to our neighbors to the north, south, east and west of us. With the measure, passage of Measure C, it was a 10 cent per square foot property sales tax. And what that funding provided was the creation of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, which is a JPA of 17 taxing authorities within the county. So pretty much every municipality and fire agency within the county joined the JPA to try to reduce the risk of wildfires. So within the Larkspur, that 10 cent per square foot tax generates $1,021,000 annually. And that money is broken up into three different appropriations. One is a 60% core projects that goes directly towards the MWPA, JPA. And then there's two 20% allocations that come back directly to the local municipality, which is the city of Larkspur, which these funds are then managed through the Central Marin Fire Authority going forward for projects. And that's a 20% fund for defensible space, which is $204,200 and 20% for local mitigation projects, which is the same amount. So we get here locally annually, we'll be getting $408,400 to be able to accomplish defensible space inspections and local hazard mitigation projects. The core projects, the way that is broken down into, and if we go to the next screen, Allison. The entire county is broken up into five operational zones, which is Nevada, West Marin, Santa Fe and Southern Marin, and then the central Marin area, which includes Corredama, Larkspur, Greenbrier, Fairfax, San Somo, CP, Hall, Ross and Kenfield. So basically, from Whitesale and Fairfax all the way to the bay is the central zone. And so the 60% project funds go towards providing education in large-scale projects. So what they end up doing is they'll come back to the central Marin area, operational area, which covers these cities that are identified here. And then we, as fire chiefs and technical advisors and your boards will sit down and look at what projects we're proposing. For example, we may look at it and go, you know, between Cascade Canyon and Whitesale, it'd be an opportunity to create a large shade of fuel break. So this year, that may be a project. And the next year, within the same operational area, we'll look at it through the committees and go, okay, you know what, we needed shade of fuel break through Madron Canyon and through King's Mountain Open Space Preserve. So that's how those projects are kind of allocated. And can you go to the next screen, Allison? And so like I mentioned, the large-scale management projects, which includes the shade of fuel breaks, and then the contract with Fire Safe Marin for public education programs. Fire Safe Marin will also provide community chipper events for your firewise communities. So if you're designated firewise site, for example, Palm Hill is a designated firewise site. Fire Safe Marin reached out to them and stated, we've got two community chipper days that are available. Well, we'll come to your house and pick up whatever green waste you have. You would just have to sign up through Fire Safe Marin's website. So they did that throughout all of their firewise sites. And then they also provided one community chipper day for each community, which this year we're using it up through the Marina Vista area. And then that core projects also assist with emergency alerting systems and methods. Also, the county with the core project is going to be doing a county-wide evacuation route study and going to start creating and improving on the existing evacuation route maps that we have. And I'll kind of go into our evacuation route maps that currently exist on the next screen. So these evacuation maps are what we currently have now. And so these maps were originally created for the fire department to try to identify what the primary and secondary evacuation routes were and to kind of break up each neighborhood to make it easier in the event that we needed a coordinated evacuation. So each color coordination on this map is a different neighborhood. However, for the community, this is almost too much information, too cumbersome. And in the event of a rapid emergency, it's going to be hard to try to decipher where your best route of travel is. So we go to the next screen. And so this one is what is currently under development. This map here was designed after the tsunami community evacuation maps. So these are designed to where you can look at them quickly under duress and quickly find your way out of your community. So the one we're showing here is the one for Greenberry Hills, where it's kind of showing you your main routes of travel to get down off of the hillside. The map will also indicate where your community refuge areas are, which is large areas where there's green belts such as parks, also areas of blacktop such as Bonner Shopping Centers. You've got Basic Elementary School, which is also a community refuge area, which are designed for if you find yourself that you can't get out in an immediate evacuation and you maybe find yourself trapped, you can temporarily take refuge in and get out of harm's way in one of these refuge areas because blacktop won't burn and green grass won't burn either. And so these should be coming out. They're currently under development now and they should be available, we're hoping, later this fall. These will also have little QR readers where it'll be a large community map where neighborhoods can come in and get the QR information off of there. Next slide, please. So here's some of the chipper events that took place through Fire Safe Marin. As I mentioned, through the core projects and the core funding, Fire Safe Marin, through their budget to the MWPA, was able to provide community chipper days for Blue Rock, Palm Hill, Madron Canyon, Marina Vista, and then they're currently coordinating, I believe in September, to have chipper events in Greenbrier. Next slide, please. And then now we're kind of moving into our 20% defensible space functions. So that it allows two options for us as a department. We can either go at it alone and try to come up with a program and hire inspectors on our own, or we can team up with our neighboring agencies and try to collaboratively hit as many homes as we possibly can, which is the MWPA model. So this year, we partnered with Kenfield Fire, Marin County, and Ross Valley Fire, and we hired through the MWPA 20 defensible space inspectors that came around and inspected homes throughout both Madron Canyon, Marina Vista, all the way up through Corredama Dara and in Palm Hill. I believe within Larkspur, there were approximately 1,100 homes that were inspected and evaluated. And homeowners were given an opportunity to walk with the inspectors and figure out what they can do within those individual properties and to make them more defendable against wildfires and giving them information also on what they can do to home harden their homes. Go to the next slide, please. And here, 1,196 homes are evaluated. And here it shows you the neighborhoods that we inspected. So it was everything west of Magnolia from the city borders on the north all the way to the Corredama border on the south and then Palm Hill. Next slide, please. So here's another image of inspectors. So they were teamed up in by twos. They were driving around in vehicles marked in uniform with badges. And they were told to try to spend as much possible time with each homeowner as they possibly can and try to identify both hazards. And then they were also collecting several different data points on an ArcGIS collector app that's used by CalFire, that's both used for pre-fire analysis and post-fire analysis to see how many homes within a certain area may be out of compliance before a fire happens to where we can identify which areas we can go to and concentrate our efforts on. And then also post-fire analysis to try to come through and see, okay, why did these homes burn? And we were able to identify whether they were, will we complain or not? Next slide, please. And then once again, here are the two inspectors out in the field. Let me go to the next one. And then through the inspections, we try to use the three E model is educate the homeowner of what the hazards are, and then we're encouraging them on what they need to do. And then at the last case scenario, if education encouragement doesn't work, then we get to the enforcement side. The goal isn't to get to the enforcement. The goal is to try to educate and encourage the homeowners to make their homes more defensible and make our community safer. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to go through an abatement, which is your enforcement side of it. And these are some long cumbersome abatements that take place. It can take several months, if not up to a year and a half, to try to track property owners down and to be able to get in there and clean them. Here's one abatement that we, it took us about 18 months from beginning to end to try to get this property owner to comply. Unfortunately, he didn't comply, so we had to go down the nuisance abatement policy within our municipal code. And so this property owner is actually on Villa Lacumbre. So you can see what the property looked like on the pictures on your upper right-hand screen and lower left are pre- abatement. And then the other two pictures indicate what we did, what it looks like after we cleared the property. And then this is one that unfortunately, we're going to have to, if he doesn't pay the abatement fees, then we're going to have to place a lien on his property. Next slide, please. And then local mitigation project efforts is that last 20% allocation. And this year, we identified two core projects that we want to do. One is the Blue Rock Neighborhood. And then the other one is the Palm Hill Neighborhoods. And part of our local mitigation is to improve our primary and secondary evacuation routes by removing hazardous fuels along the roadside, removing low-hanging tree limbs, and then identifying properties that have been gone years without maintenance and trying to see if there's areas where we can go in there and help the homeowners. And then also, we've gotten there some community chipper days to help the homeowners once they remove their green waste. Next slide, please. So here is Blue Rock where we're going to be going through. And then part of the Blue Rock Neighborhood as well as addressing the area within the Citron Fire Road area, which is Marin County Open Space District land. We've been in communications with their superintendent and park rangers, and they've gotten buy-in on what we're trying to accomplish. And so this is going to be, if not an annual, biannual mitigation is coming in there and removing a lot of the overgrown fuels on the Citron Fire Road. So that'll be part of this project. Next slide. And kind of here shows some pictures before and after fuel mitigation and improving some of the fire road accesses. The pictures on the top and then the bottom right-hand are pre-mitigation and during. And then the left side is what it looks like post-mitigation. And when people always want to try to figure out what it looks like when we come in, a lot of community members and homeowners feel like defensible space means we're coming in there and clearcutting your properties. And that's not the intent. Clearcutting doesn't do anything good for the environment. It doesn't do anything good for us here locally. So what we do is we create this park-like setting, which is shown on the lower left-hand corner, which improves, I think, quality of life plus reduces your fire risk. Next slide, please. And so here's an area of the Citron Fire Road. Picture on the left was pre-work. Picture on the left shows post-work at the lower picture, and then the upper picture, you can kind of see that brown scarring or show some wattles. That's the fire area on June 13th in the morning when we got woken up for the fire on, off a cedar. That's the fire that happened there. We were pretty fortunate that we had the fire road and majority, if not half of the fuels removed approximately two weeks before this fire happened, or else it probably would have been a lot worse. Next slide, please. And then the Palm Hill Neighborhood. Once again, with Palm Hill, there's areas that we've identified for improving your evacuation routes, chipper days. The next slide, please. Here you go, your evacuation routes. Those of you been up on Palm Hill and up off Elm know how it can get tight in certain areas. Here's a picture of my vehicle on the right-hand side, just showing how the canopy kind of creates that tunnel view. And so our goal is to kind of go in there and push the vegetation back to the edge of the pavement and try to get us at least 15 feet of clearance over the roadway. If not, if areas where we can find where it's appropriate, potentially go up to clear sky. Next slide, please. And then the William Bike Path, which kind of is at the base and surrounds the entire area of Palm Hill is currently overgrown with a lot of hazardous dry fuels, which is your Scotch broom, which is invasive. And so the goal with our plan this year is to go in there and clean up a lot of that fuel from there and then create that park-like setting. And you can see what we've done on the picture on the left. That's a picture where we did the, through the acacia side of the bike path. That was completely overgrown. We were able to do that about a year and a half ago and clear it. So that's what the intent is when we're said and done with the project. Next slide, please. And then also, a big portion that affects Palm Hill that I get calls on quite a bit is the Elm Crest Homeowners Association Open Space Land. They're, I'm not sure, I've been here with the organization coming on four years and they've, I've done work once, and that was last year. And that's after the education and the encouragement, and we almost got to the enforcement portion of it. When then with the passage of Measure C, we're going to go ahead and collaborate with them and try to clear this whole area up. Because this area here at the end of Birch and Lakeside, which you access through Corredama Dara, will definitely impact everything on Palm Hill. Next slide, please. And so here's a little bit of the clearing that they started doing at the end of- And so here's a little bit of the clearing that they started doing at the end of last year. So they went and did 100 feet from the homes down at the bottom of the hill. Unfortunately, the homes that are primarily impacted are the ones at the top of the hill. So we're gonna, like I mentioned earlier, we're going to collaborate with the homeowners association to get that cleared up this year. Next slide, please. And so that's the end of my presentation, and I'm free to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I think Kevin's on mute. First, I just wanted to-
Hold on, let me get off mute. I just wanted to thank Ruben very much for that presentation. I thought it was terrific. And I just wanted to congratulate him for all the hard work that he and his staff are doing to support fire safety measures within our community. Okay, sorry, Gabe, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, very much the same, Ruben. Thank you so much, Chief Martin, for the presentation. And I'm, you know, lucky enough to see you in action a little bit more on the fire prevention board. And I wanted to thank also our city manager, who's on the operations committee, both of them I really have been trying to communicate with. And, you know, just as one testimonial, we have a monthly meeting of all the neighborhood response groups, about 40 of them. And anytime we invite Chief Martin, he's there, and this same kind of information goes to all the leaders of the neighborhood response groups. And I think what he's doing and the communication he's providing is great, and I'm so glad he could show up tonight. And questions, just briefly, you did mention with the city area, you know, some of the environmental concerns. If you could just say a little more about, you know, what steps you're taking, you know, to within the bounds of CEQA or, you know, address any of the environmental issues. Appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the big key components is working with our environmental partners and trying to make sure that we're doing everything that's sound with the best sound practices for within the environment. And so what we're doing here locally is with our new hazard mitigation specialist Todd Lando, he's gotten a direction to go ahead and start contracting with CEQA companies and to create a CEQA document to try to look at both, not only the Citron Fire Road and to see what environmental impacts, any kind of shaded fuel breaks will involve, just to make sure that we get approval for that. And then also getting CEQA environmental review for our roadway clearances. Even though they're categorically exempt to do defensible space around roadways and around properties within 100 feet, we just want to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. And we're going to try to look at the city as a whole and do one large CEQA document that covers all of our defensible space roadside management and fuels management. So that way, it's easier for these projects to get off the ground.
Great. So a couple more questions. This one is maybe premature, but, you know, sort of back of the envelope, really rough estimate. If you were to look at Larkspur and say, you know, look at the fires that are going on today, you know, how far we need to go for the firefighters to feel they've got good defensible space, you know, good evac routes and all that? If that were a percentage, you know, where would you say we are now versus when we started and where we might be in 12 months?
We're probably about 50% there, and that's being honest. You know, it's taken decades and decades for the community to become overgrown with vegetation. And I think every year, we've gotten a little bit better and a little bit better and a little bit better. The biggest challenge for a lot of fire agencies is we were never designed for fuel mitigation, defensible space inspections. So with the passage of measure C, it actually provides that steady funding source that where we can continue to work on these projects and can identify some of these larger scale fuel breaks that will protect the community. So I think we're probably, we're getting there. It's probably going to take us another six years to get to a point where we could probably take a deep breath and relax.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Dan, Helmer?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Shannon, could you put one of the neighborhood maps back up on the shared screen to show the one, the one that shows all the green areas, just a sample? Okay. Passed over a couple of them. Now, you have to go forward. I want the ones that show the, the green areas. There you go. If council members and the members of the public that are participating, and I could see the, the graphic complexity of one of these maps, you might get the impression that these are pathways or something like that, but these are showing all the green sideyards and everything around buildings. This in essence shows the landscaped areas that are expected to be managed. And these are the areas that also need access by the fire department in the event that they need to fight a fire in your neighborhoods. So I would just recognize the scale and complexity of the amount of area involved here, referencing Chief Martin's comment about vegetation management and how our essential fire protection services don't take in, didn't, weren't intended to take into account these areas. So it's incumbent on the property owners to make sure that these areas are free and clear and also reduce the fuel in order for these, this plan, these measures to be effective. So I would just recognize the scale and complexity of the challenge that we face. And I'm grateful to Chief Martin for his approach and all the efforts of our firefighters and working toward these very important goals. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, no. I would, I would echo that and, and just reflect again some of the comments about how we're asking our, our firefighters and public safety officials to do things that maybe 10 years ago, they weren't really considering would be part of their task, but they are now. And I'm very grateful that they're focusing on those issues in a aggressive way. Anything else from the council? Any comments from the public on this, on this topic?
I'm looking for any raised hands or any emailed comments. And at this time, I see none.
Okay. Good. Well, thank, thank you, Ruben. That was a really terrific presentation. I really learned a lot.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
So, no, it's, it's our, our, our pleasure and honor to have you here. Thank you. So I think that means we need to move on to agenda item number four, which is approval of the consent calendar. So unless any council members want to take anything off? Any members of the public who want to make a comment about items on the consent calendar?
I see one raised hand. So caller ending in 1402 is your turn to comment. And as a caller, you'll need to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Yes, James Holmes, Larkspur. And I actually wanted to make a comment or rather ask a question relating to the fire presentation, but I guess I didn't hit the button fast enough. Can I still do that?
Yes, you can.
And I guess this would be really a question directed to the chief. What would a shaded fire break in Madrone Canyon entail?
Yeah, so shaded fuel break, just imagine a park-like setting. So where you still have your mature redwood trees, but you remove a lot of the ground fuels. So a lot of your brush, making sure your grasses are cut low is similar to walking through a park.
And would that, would that be anticipated to occur on, on the resident's property or on the open space lands adjoining the, the lots?
Those, so those would be bordering private properties. We don't go into people's yards or properties to cut their vegetation. We, like, say, for example, if your property was overgrown and was within that shaded fuel break area, that's where we would come in and do the inspection. We would try to do the education and then encourage you to do your part to create that continuation of defensible space, not only for yourself, but for your neighbors as well. But the shaded fuel break is primarily all done on open space land.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, that kind of took us back into the previous agenda item. Are there any comments on what's on the consent calendar? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, do we need a roll call, Allison?
I'll do that real quick. Council member Candell?
Yes.
Council member Helmer?
Yes.
Council member Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Haroff?
Yes.
And Mayor Way is absent.
Right. Okay, so, so moved. In which case, we can move on to agenda item number five, which is our city manager's oral report.
I'll be very brief, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm, I have a few COVID-related items that I'll save for those agenda items later on the, on the council's agenda. A few reminders. One is, if you haven't done it yet, please take the census. It's critical that people respond to the census because that affects the allocation of money to agencies and how we're eligible for money. So we'd really like to see everyone respond, and please do so if you haven't yet. Want to underscore messaging that the community's been receiving from the water agency and from the electric utilities, which is that we are in a period where conservation of resources is critical. And everybody, the more you can do to conserve, the better, really help us through this period. I also want to let the council know that I participated in a meeting today as the county sort of plans for potential evacuation centers around the county. Neither Larkspur nor Corder Madera will be in the first possible locations for an evacuation center. It looks like Mill Valley will probably be the first one in the southern part of the county, should it be needed. But we'll try to have some staff go and observe what's going on in the case we need to facilitate something to that effect here in our community, possibly at the high school. And so to that end, we also, through the Corder Madera staff, put a call out today to some of our volunteer organizations to compile a list of people in the community who are, who feel they'd be comfortable volunteering in an evacuation center if it became necessary. And so if folks feel comfortable about that, they can reach out to the staff at Town Hall, Corder Madera Town Hall, and get a copy of a form that they can fill out. And if they are having trouble reaching someone there, they can contact our staff and we'll connect them. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for the city manager on his oral report? Anything from the public?
There is no public comment.
Okay. In that case, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is council members' oral reports and comments. Do we have anybody who wants to offer something up?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I'll go briefly. So I just wanted to report again, you know, being fire season, that we have more involvement of the neighborhood response groups. Creekside has-
Bad connection here.
Response group. And Marin Park as well. And, you know, as you and I both work with the Marin Park residents on some of their housing issues, I'm increasingly turning my focus to their neighborhood response group focus, which is partly fire, but also flooding and other safety issues. So I hope to report back more on that. With regard to the, you know, housing issues there, we haven't been able to set up a meeting, you know, after a couple of weeks of attempts. And I'll report back at the next meeting if there's any way to meet with both the tenants and the, and the park operators there to reach any kind of agreement. And with that, I, thank you, and that's it.
Okay, any, any other council members? I'll just, oh, I'm sorry. Gabe, you're raising your hand again.
Vice Mayor, I just had one quick question, you know, regarding the police review commission. I was also expecting to go to the August 13th meeting. Do you, do you know when the next public meeting is planned? Has that been put on the calendar already?
I do not know the answer to that.
The, I'd have to look the exact date. The police council meets quarterly, so the next meeting would be in November.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council members want to contribute? I just have a brief thing I'd like to bring up. Earlier today, I participated in the audit committee for MC Clean Energy, and I'm pleased to report that we have a, a, the best audit report, I think, I've ever seen in the history of that organization. So our MC's finances are terrific. Last year was actually the, the best year the organization has had. I think our total revenues are up to around $420 million a year. That's gross revenues, that's not net. But the audit report was completely clean, and I'm very pleased to see that we're, we're running probably the, the best energy organization in the state of California. And that's it. Okay, anything else from the council? Any, any comments from the public?
I see one hand raised. Kevin Carroll, it's your turn for a public comment.
Yeah, just on the, I wanted to make it a little clearer that on the Marin Park situation, after the last meeting and the direction from the council to the ad hoc committee, we were asked to submit all of our contact information to the city clerk so that a meeting could be arranged. And then three days ago, we get an email saying that no meeting's going to take place. We were never contacted. So any problems with organizing a meeting weren't from the tenants. Apparently it's from management. And included in that email three days ago was that apparently management is unhappy with the makeup of the residence councils, who were appointed by the residents to represent them. And nothing else was said. So I'm here to, I wanted to make that clear, that the issue was not on our side, that why a meeting hasn't taken place, but also to extend to both members of the council that are on the committee. We have a standing eight o'clock Thursday PM meeting, and we'll extend both of you the link, if you'd like to attend this week's meeting and try to work this situation out.
And I see no further public comment for this item.
Mr. Vice Mayor, are you frozen? Oh, here you are.
Yeah, I, I know, I was frozen. We couldn't hear a thing.
I think we're prepared to move to the next item.
Okay. So I think that takes us to item number seven, public hearings. We don't have any. And then on to agenda item eight and eight point one, which is a review of the 2019-20 preferential parking permit pilot program. So do we have a staff report on that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Haroff. Tonight, the council is asked to review the pilot year of the preferential parking program. This program was established in August 2019 in cooperation with the town of Corte Madera to address issues around Redwood High School students parking on neighborhood streets surrounding the school. The initial program boundaries included all of Larsburg Marina and Heather Gardens neighborhoods. After one year of the program, approximately 640 permits were issued to 250 residents in those neighborhoods. And in July, participants were asked to complete a survey detailing their experience of the first year of the program and their willingness to continue for another year. 184 people responded to the survey, and while the majority of respondents did not report experiencing negative impacts from Redwood High School student parking prior to the program implementation, 50% did respond that they found the program to be very or somewhat effective. When asked whether they would like the program to continue, respondents were split, with 47.88% saying yes and 52.12% saying no. When broken down by street, Corte Del Bio, Villa La Brisa, Diane Lane, and William Avenue were the only streets with a majority of residents requesting that the permit program continue for another year. This makes sense considering those streets are closest to Redwood High School and likely bear the brunt of student parking. However, it's important to note that when asked if a reasonable fee was charged per permit would residents like the program to continue, 72.22% said no compared to only 27.78% who responded yes. At this time, when broken down by street, only Diane Lane had a majority of respondents saying they'd like the program to continue. Back when approving the program, the council had initially considered a $50 per permit fee, but eventually determined the cost of the pilot year of the program could be absorbed by the general fund. Staff has calculated the cost of the pilot year of the program to be approximately $14,750. This figure includes staff time of the administration department and enforcement time from Central Marine Police. The Public Works Department's cost of purchasing and installing permit zone signage was not included in that initial calculation. Staff is seeking council's feedback on the 2019-2020 preferential parking permit pilot program, with a vote to be scheduled for the September 16th meeting. Two great options for the council to consider are either ending the pilot program and inviting individual streets to petition petition to be in a new parking program that charges a fee of $50 per permit, or renewing the pilot program for another year, limited to the streets of Corte Del Bio, Villa La Brisa, possibly a portion of Riviera Circle, potentially including address numbers 71 to 201, and address numbers 500 and higher, and Diane Lane and William Avenue. I'll pull up now a potential, let's see, I'll just need to share it, a potential map to show those revised neighborhood areas. This first one here shows Villa La Brisa, Corte Del Bio, and the portions of Riviera Circle towards the front of the neighborhood. And the second revision to the Heather Gardens neighborhood shows Diane Lane and William Avenue being those two program or those two streets to continue. Staff has calculated that if the program was limited to only those streets, permits would each cost around $50 each to recoup the program costs. Four letters of public comment have been received since the publication of the staff report and are available to review on the online agenda packet. Thank you, and staff is available for any questions.
Okay, great. Thanks for that report. Are there any council questions or comments? Scott? Councilmember Candell, you have to turn off your mute.
This might be a technical problem.
Okay, there you go. There he is.
Okay, so I don't know exactly if we ask this question too, but in order to make this revenue neutral, are we having any penalties for violators? And did that bring in any revenues over the past year that might off might balance some of the costs so we wouldn't have to charge people that permit fee? I'm not sure if I asked that, too.
Councilmember, you know, we do charge, it's a ticket, it's a parking ticket. And so there, when you issue a parking ticket, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on your point of view, all the administrative work's done by traffic court, but a lot of the penalty stays in the traffic court. So we actually only see a modest amount of the of the fine here in Larsburg. Now, this one is a little different because we added an administrative fee. So I saw Sky, he should have interrupted me, I think you remember this. For this one now, we actually shifted it in the pilot program, it's an administrative fee, and it has an escalator. So if people violate it, they get a modest, they get a warning the first time, and then they get an administrative fine the second time. And then that administrative fine keeps escalating. No one did that, so we didn't see much revenue come in. We issued several warnings, and people were fairly good about complying after that.
Well, a possibility, which maybe we can discuss the council, is if we didn't have warnings and we had some kind of steep fines, it it feels to me that this may be one of those types of programs that should not be funded by the law-abiding residents, but instead should be funded by the rule breakers. So I am curious to know where that inflection point would be. If we charge no warnings, $500 for every violation, I don't think anybody would violate it, and it might be also be a way to make this, you know, revenue neutral. I don't know if anybody has any appetite for that or wants to discuss it, but I guess I feel if the people who live there don't want to pay this fee, I don't want to make them pay the fee because they're the ones who are trying to help. So I'm not even sure where to go from there. If anybody has any other alternatives, I would love to hear.
Any other comments from the council? I see Dan Hillmer, please.
Just a quick question for the staff. If council's direction is to follow one of the recommendation options, which would be to continue the pilot program on the streets described, limited to those streets, what is the process and how easy is it to add segments of adjacent streets to which those parking impacts might be unintentionally moved if parking is restricted on the streets in the pilot program? What's the process and how easy is it?
So my recommendation would be that we craft this pilot program in such a way that the streets that were part of year one but were then removed for part two could go through a relatively quick administrative process to get added back in if they were able to, if if everyone on that street, for example, or some threshold that we set petitions to get back in, then we would have the administrative ability to put them back into the program. However, I think if you had a street that was conflicted, I'd have the process set up so that the council could hear both sides of the story and make a decision.
So the street could be, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the Vice Mayor, we could petition a segment of the street most impacted or nearer the high school. And what would be the process for achieving that versus the entire street, which if it's long enough, may not meet the threshold of the entire street is pulled?
I think we can come up with systems to define segments. You know, I think if we run into the problem you're describing, then we're going to be experiencing that the students are simply going to the boundary of where they know the enforcement actions take place. And it'll just keep pushing out, which was one of the things that led us to define the whole neighborhood the first time. But I think what you're hearing from, what you're seeing in the survey and what staff's heard in direct contact with residents is the belief that those streets that are fairly far from the high school relative to others are just not going to see students. And we may need to now try the pilot program in this other form to see if that's true or not. None of us know exactly what the tolerance point of a high school student is to acquire free parking and run or walk to the campus. So I guess we'll find out.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to thank you for the information, and I appreciate the flexibility that's built into the approach and also recognize the context, given the the reduced impacts during the pandemic that we're experiencing now, which adds complexity to the situation. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, and just to echo that that last comment, schools closed. So we're going through a kind of a transition period to kind of figure out how things will be opening up over a period of time. And I'd really not want to change the status quo at this point until we figure that out.
Yeah, thank you. Two questions. One is the first staff recommendation of charging $50, would that that would be non-elected? I'm assuming, I'm curious how that would be collected so that if someone, you know, along William Avenue decides that they don't want to pay that amount, you know, what would what would happen there? And then the second is a more personal question. I'm actually on one of those streets, and I wonder if I need to recuse myself, you know, from the, what is it, 200 foot rule or something like that?
I'll defer to Sky. I think you can probably participate in a general discussion right now. I'll defer to Sky on that question.
Yeah, I think I think it's fine. I mean, the program already exists, and ultimately, it would be up like, it's part of general discussion when it comes to making decisions about about any particular area, we would need to implement the 500 foot rule, so, but for purposes of discussion, I think it's fine.
And then to your other question, in order to obtain the permits, we would collect the fee for the permits, and then we'd issue them. And as as we discussed when we first created this program, the permanent program, not this pilot test around the high school, you don't have to buy the permits, you can park off-street. So, you know, the the challenge here is you're wrestling with two policy issues. You're wrestling with trying to mitigate the impacts of the high school on residential neighborhoods. And then you're trying to wrestle with the fact that you're effectively licensing control of the public right of way to homeowners. So that's the the two policy issues you're trying to balance and find the find the sweet spot between what's an appropriate public expenditure in looking at those competing interests.
And one follow-up question, you know, a little bit to, you know, Scott's point. So if there is a violation, then it goes through the courts, there's little or no revenue there. What possible revenue, you know, would there be? I thought you had, you know, described an option, I'm not sure I understood it.
I misspoke. I realized halfway through what I was explaining. To make this program a little more painful to the violators, we didn't send it to traffic court, we made it an administrative program. So we actually administer through CMPA the fine process. So if a student violates the program, they come into CMPA and they pay for the ticket there. That allowed us to put in an escalating system, so I don't have it in front of me to remember what it is, but I think it's 100 and then 250 and then 500. But, you know, the the, I guess the challenge I see in not doing an educational component to this is that the anecdotal belief that we heard loud and clear from the community is this problem is particularly bad in the second half of the school year for sophomores who don't get to get parking on campus because of the way that parking's allocated. And so then they get their license, and they want to drive to school, and they're not allowed to park on campus, so they go find parking. That's not the entire problem, but that's when the the problem becomes more perceptible to the public. There are kids who just elect to park off-campus, and we know that, we observe that all through the school year. But the numbers increased quite a bit in the spring, and that's been the explanation we've been provided regularly. So you have young, new drivers who, you know, you have to decide what you want that first touch and experience from law enforcement to be as as a new driver. And we've erred on the side of education for that first touch.
Any other comments from council? You know, just just as a comment before I ask for public comment, we're in a period of transition right now. The school year is not what it has been, and we need to be careful about making decisions that don't reflect our current circumstances. So my own hope is that we just renew the pilot program. But are there any comments from the public on this topic?
Yes, I'll wait for any raised hands, but to begin with, we've received two written public comments. This first one comes in from Liz. In favor of option two, modify to include section of Riviera Circle closest to the exits onto Doherty, thank you. And again, that came from Liz Cronin. And then the next written comment received was from Don Matheson. She writes, definitely don't want to see public funds going into this program. If the streets don't want it bad enough to cough up $50, then it's not that much of a nuisance. Revenue neutral is okay, Don. After all, it wasn't a secret they were moving next door to a high school, Don Matheson. And now I'll look for any raised hands in our audience, and I am seeing no further public comments at this time.
Okay, all right, good. So let's bring it back to the council. Are there any other further comments or thoughts from the council on this topic? And so just to make sure that we're clear on what staff needs in terms of direction, my sense is that the that I think the consensus is just to renew the pilot program for another Councilmember Hillmer?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Is it the the status of this item that this will come back to the council in September for action?
Yes, because I think what we need to do is be really clear to these neighborhoods, if we're adjusting the boundary of the pilot program, what it is, so that people who are left in the boundary or out of the boundary know, so they could come ask you. You know, we didn't frame our initial outreach to the community that we were modifying the boundaries yet. That's something we wanted you to give us feedback about tonight. You certainly also could elect to just renew it as it is and encompass the entire neighborhoods. But I also think then people deserve the opportunity to come back and tell you whether they think that's a good idea or not.
Which is fine.
A question for Mr. Vice Mayor, would it be helpful if we saw what public comment came in between now and the September meeting to just allow adequate time for everybody to to think about this? And then we can take that into consideration when we're required to act.
That would be perfectly fine with me, unless somebody has an objection to that.
I have a recommendation, though. I think I think you need to frame a very definitive thing for the public. You need to say, if no one says anything, this is what we're going to do in September. Otherwise, I don't think you're going to get sufficient, clear response from the community. So I think it-
Right.
We certainly could- So I think, we certainly could, I think we could wait if waiting means you want to renew the pilot program exactly how it was last year. So at least we would be telling the community, if you didn't like that, and you want the council to amend the boundaries, or change the fees, or charge a fee for the permit itself, at least then folks would know what they're responding to. If you leave it too open-ended, I'm not sure they'll get enough commentary.
Right. So my recommendation would be on your, given the two bulleted items you have on the agenda, would be to endorse the second bulleted item. So that's renew the pilot program for another year, limited to the specific streets identified in, in the, in the list.
And I'm sorry, just, just for clarification, Dan, if we renew this, we should expect another $15,000, you know, charge to the city, is that right?
It, it, the total cost between Central Marin and the city is probably going to run 10,000 to 15,000, depending on the exact circumstances. Maybe less because the boundaries are smaller, but it's hard to know for sure. And that, that's mostly hourly rates of our staff that were involved, and the Central Marin staff that were involved. That's the value we're giving you. So it's lost, it's cost in the sense that it's lost opportunity for that staff to be working on other items.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Dan?
I would support the Vice Mayor's recommendation that we follow the second bullet item in this, in the staff recommendation, and continue the pilot program. At least let the public know that's our intent, waiting for comment between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
We can also bring the fine schedule back, as Councilmember Candell suggests, so you can review that and decide if you want to make it more severe.
Good idea.
That's fine, too. Any other comment? So do you have sufficient direction, Mr. City Manager, on this?
I do, and I want, before you close, just to acknowledge that probably the largest cost in that amount that you saw was Allison Fallister, City Clerk's time. So I asked her to do the staff report, because she's the person who bore the brunt of administering this program for Larkspur.
And we appreciate her efforts in every respect, and she's done a terrific job today in presenting on this topic. And unless there's anything further on this item, I think we move to Agenda Item 8.2.
And we'll be turning it over to Shannon O'Hare, the Assistant to the City Manager.
All right. Me, pull up the screen share. Folks seeing my PowerPoint?
Yep, there it is.
And are you seeing my screen down here? Let me minimize this. Great. Good evening, Vice Mayor Hoff, and members of the City Council. My name is Shannon O'Hare, and I am the Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, I'll be providing you with a brief strategic communications and community engagement update for 2020. So a little bit about how we got here. The city has been communicating and has had an informal communications program for certainly as long as I've been here, and well before that. We adopted a strategic communications and community engagement plan in 2019 with a number of goals. One of them was to measure our communications efforts, as well as deliberately allocate some resources, particularly in the City Manager's office, explicitly towards expanding and improving our communications with the community. So new communications in the past year that I'll be going through, this isn't exhaustive of everything we've done in the past year, but I thought I'd provide some highlights. We've enhanced social media, and particularly our Instagram presence, as well as improved graphic design, navigation, and visual elements in reports, forms, and collateral throughout the organization. As you can see tonight, we've also moved to the teleconference virtual meeting format, as well as added a council highlight digest, and really pushed out e-news. Some of this was in the 2019 plan and was long, was long formulated by us. However, COVID-19 public safety measures have accelerated a lot of planned communication efforts we've had, as well as necessitated shifts in how we communicate and serve the community throughout the organization. And although I'll be showing some highlights of what particularly the City Manager's office is doing, I do want to shout out everybody in our organization and acknowledge all of our employees, because there can't be a successful communications plan unless customer service, community outreach, and real dedication to public service is everywhere. So certainly, on a daily basis, our maintenance workers are communicating with our residents. Our librarians every day are doing communications. Our building, our planners are doing communications as well. So they can certainly have a communications program. The definition of success changes. If you work for, say, unnamed airlines, certain utilities, et cetera, it's a much more difficult job. So great work of all of our staff makes this easier. One of the things we've done, this is an example of, if you've seen Around Town, Julian gave the presentation about our road update and our repair program. We've really improved our signage around just simple graphic design elements, et cetera. A lot of the work you'll be seeing this evening is from our administrative assistant, Drew Bendixson. So if things look great, you can thank him. Another example of improving just visuals and formatting was a major project for us was the budget book for this year. The contents of the budget book by far are the most important, and those have been excellent and are certainly attributable to our finance department and our Finance Director, Kathy Orm. But in previous years, she was tasked with doing the budget book pretty much on her own, without a lot of help and support in terms of formatting. So this year, on a very, very short timeline, Kathy still let us update and improve kind of some of the visuals of the budget, make it a little bit more searchable and user-friendly, particularly to maybe interested members of the community who aren't used to looking at these documents all the time, as she was changing the budget pretty much by the minute as we were adjusting for different revenue projections due to COVID-19 impacts. This are another couple of examples of regular communications that are going out. In the late spring and through the summer, we did a number of community chats with the mayor and the city manager. A couple of department heads also gave presentations during that time. We'll continue to do that as issues and interest comes from the community. And then now, after every city council meeting, there's a digest about actions taken by the council, items approved, as well as links to certain parts of the meeting. And this has been pretty popular in the community, where folks can see what we did at a council meeting, and then go to a specific part of the meeting they may be interested in with just a click. So it's not only adding things like digital meetings and virtual meetings that people can view in real time, but also if they have a certain part of the meeting that's of particular interest to them. For instance, the road repair update, or the parking program, or any of the financial or COVID impacts, they can go directly to that part of the meeting. This is an example of Instagram. So in addition to plain text or static communications, we've also had video
Welcome to the regular meeting of Larkspur City Council.
With directions for the city council meeting. This is another example of one of these communications that we did when curbside pickup became available full-time with the library. As well as some of the marketing we've done for our library and for our recreation department, which are now, is now our community services department. This was particularly important this year, as we weren't doing a whole lot in person. As well as some of the kind of cross-promotion we've done with our partner agencies. So MCE Vice Mayor Haroff mentioned one of our partner agencies earlier this meeting, actually, as well as helping cross-promote, really the incredible effort our Chamber of Commerce did to support local businesses earlier this spring and into the summer. If you want to know what the most popular content is, we have about 1,000 Instagram followers, and without fail, what gets the highest clicks is the, any historical photo we post. So although we have all these new shiny things, certainly Larkspur Heritage, Larkspur Historical Photos easily give us the most engagement, a lot of times into the high hundreds shared. Here is a side-by-side comparison of different platforms we have this year compared to last year. I purposely didn't put necessarily the percentages of how much it grew, because some of these numbers are pretty small, so the percentage looks a little outside, outsized, and a little misleading, depending. But all of our different platforms have grown an enormous amount in the past year, and also have grown without very much advertising or, or paid engagement, which is particularly for social media, increasingly the way these corporations are moving and these platforms are moving to become profitable. So I think we had a grand total for this year, $200 of advertising budget, and we went from having nobody on Instagram to over 1,000 folks with high hundreds views on a regular basis. So it really speaks to the content that's created, as well as interest in our community that we're able to get those kinds of numbers. And then just a brief overview of our website and other digital platforms. On the previous graph, social media growth has accelerated in the past year. Part of it is because we're putting out a lot more engaging content, regular content. Also, part of that's a reflection of the fact that we're not meeting in person as much, and I think a lot of folks who may have been more resident to go for digital services are now integrating that into how they engage with their government, how they expect to get services from their government. Most of our website traffic continues to be desktop-based, much more so than the majority of websites, although our mobile share continues to grow. Our top pages predictably are library pages, council agendas, public works, bids, job postings, planning and building services. Most of our website traffic is very local, and visits to the website are short. You don't want to draw a direct causation about what folks might be doing, but usually people who visit the city website aren't there to browse or to kind of look around. They're there to get something. So they're there to find their library book. They're there to find what's on the agenda. They're there to bid on a project or see where an RFP is, or to see if we're hiring at the moment. And then views of our public meetings, something that's interesting, are growing modestly, not as much as one might think during everything being shifted to, to digital, but it's something that we'll keep an eye on for the next year, as well as people viewing certain parts of council meetings, as we continue to push certain, certain presentations we're giving for folks who might be interested. Finally, our 2020 communication, communication goals and works in progress. We're moving towards centralized citywide communications. We're doing more with less, and particularly the City Manager's Office will really seek to support departments and communications they might need, and to spend that time, as they're certainly busy with other things. And then we want to continue to improve the usability and visual elements in all of our communications for a broader audience, and expand digital presence, services, and capabilities. Some of that will be done centrally, but over the next year, there'll be, you know, a lot of, you know, out of the City Clerk's office, or out of planning and building, or through the Community Services Department, moving more and more of our forms to be searchable, easily available to the community. So there'll be a lot of folks working on this. And then continue to strengthen old-fashioned communications. This presentation, because it's visually appealing, and because you can get a lot of numbers out of it, I've shown in the PowerPoint, it's been social media-heavy and digital-heavy, but citywide, we want to meet people where they are. So although I show an Instagram post, certainly, we continue to prioritize phone, email, mail, any way the public wants to reach us, or whatever might be most appropriate for how they need to be served. And then another major project will be a complete redesign of the city website. If you go to the city website at the moment, you won't notice anything differently, but we're going through, and we're going through pages, and we're cleaning up content before we actually take it live and do the redesign. We're also going to establish branding and marketing for the Community Services Department, and always continue to coordinate and communicate with partner organizations and agencies to help get the word out. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was on mute. I just wanted to say that was, that was a terrific presentation. It reminds me of a comment that I got from a council member, Helmer, about other matters, about us kicking and screaming going into the 21st See that we're doing that. So any other comments from councilmembers?
Does the Councilmember Helmer might have a question?
Really, a comment. I just want to express my gratitude for Shannon and all the fine work that she's done on behalf of the city and for our community since she started working with us. There's been a real transformation in the way that the city presents itself, and the way that we are learning to communicate with all our residents. And also, I want to just say that I think this reinforces the idea that in the future, it's so critical for us to take into account how our communication networks are designed in any decisions we make, in any new facilities we create, because these are the, really the ways in which we are going to learn and communicate with, with the public, and solve our, address our challenges that we are facing in the future. Thank you so much, Shannon. You've done a great job.
It's terrific. Anyone else? I see Scott.
Shannon, I agree. Thank you so much. Your, everything you're doing is fantastic. I have a question just about trying to understand the costs and the manpower that this project is taking, and I don't know if you know the answers to this, but I'm curious, are we outsourcing a lot of the IT work that we're doing, the website design, the whatever Twitter feeds, the Instagram posts? Is this our staff doing it? And if so, can you give us an estimate of the number of staff hours, I don't know, per week that we're talking about? And if it's an outside contractor, if there's some dollar figure to how much we're paying somebody to do all this stuff, I, I'd just be curious about that. Thanks.
Yeah, so I'll put aside IT, because that's a term that can mean a lot of different things, including things that I wouldn't consider necessarily communications, like cybersecurity, infrastructure, et cetera. And we just have a new IT outsourced service provider, and I believe that was brought to the council a couple of months ago, and I don't know the number off the top of my head, but that's already available for the, the manpower and what those costs are. We also have a third-party website developer, so we don't have an inside, an inside person developing the website. The content management, in terms of who actually goes in and updates the website, is done by staff. And depending on the department page and how specific the page is, a number of different staff do that kind of on a regular basis. So it's really part of all of our jobs. And when you put a dollar amount on communications, we try to get the most mileage out of what we do. So if we offer, in the library, they're now doing streamed storytimes on Facebook, right? So that's actually a service. That's not necessarily communications. But then after that's done, you put it on all of these different sites at the same time to try to maximize the bang for your buck. We actually, we occasionally use a graphic designer for some things, but most of this is done in-house. So Drew Bendixson's the administrative assistant I mentioned. This looks really, really good, and folks pay good money, understandably, for outside services and social media management, et cetera. But at this juncture, most of it's done in-house. And I would say it's about, depending on the week, sometimes it feels like 110% of my times is communications, other times it's about 10%. But it would be about 40% of the job, and for the administrative assistant, it would be about 40% of the job. But a lot of times, it's integrated with other things. So when you look at, for example, the parking program, there's a lot of communications behind that. That was Allison. I don't want to take any communications for that. But posting things, getting the word out, et cetera, a lot of times is really integrated into a larger project, where it's certainly a lot of work, but we try to not do communications for communication's sake. We don't have a marketing department the way some communities do, the communities that are tourism-based, or a lot of their identity in services. That answers.
Let me ask one quick follow-up question. You seem to kind of have your, your finger on the pulse of this maybe more than anybody. Are there any things that you would recommend that we do differently? We allocate resources differently to make this a more efficient program, to help us move forward, you know, quickly and improve our communications?
I don't want to say that we're doing great, but I do think that particularly during this past year, looking at how successful things were and seeing, moving forward, how to do them differently is a huge part, really of any project management, right? To try to be the most efficient, and to try to do things that make sense, so you don't burn a lot of time, as well as maximize the impact things have. So that's what I would say, and that's part of what we've been trying to do, and just about every step. that's part of what we've been trying to do. And just about every staff meeting or any one-on-one, again, I'm talking about our centralized communications program, but at department meetings, when they talk about public service requests, et cetera, at the staff level, that's something that's brought up on a consistent basis, that I think really helps both serve the community as well as be efficient.
Thank you. And just, you know, on my behalf, I really appreciate this report. I think it's a really important thing that you're doing with the community. If there's anything you need from city council, please, please let us know, and we'll happily provide you the resources you need, if possible. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, too, I just wanted to chime in, because Councilman Candell had asked about costs, and I was quickly calling some of them up. In terms of tools, not staff time, we spend about $5,000 a year on communication tools, and that includes the website. And it's important to note, Shannon said, we pay for a service to provide the website. That includes, they have legal support to make sure we're compliant with Americans with Disabilities Act. They have legal support to make sure we're compliant with our state's sunshine law, the Brown Act, and the Public Records Act, so that that way, we don't get ourselves in trouble. So we're paying for a little more than just a website, like you might pay for for your business.
Okay, Gabe, you had a comment?
Yeah, Shannon, thank you so much. I want to echo everybody's appreciation. I had a couple of questions, and they're both around metrics. So thinking about communication strategy, you know, what do you use as measures to see how you're succeeding, or how you can improve, or whatnot, you know, what numbers, you know, if there are any sort of key performance indicators? And then one that I'm specifically interested, as a second question, is sort of inbound versus outbound communication. So I realized that posting something is outbound, and I'm curious what the last year has seen as far as that mix, and, you know, where you think that might be going.
Do you mind if I ask you what your definition of inbound is?
Inbound is someone contacting you versus you posting something outward. So this is a marketing term.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood the question. So in terms of key performance indicators, we don't, as part of the communications plan, we never set certain numbers that we absolutely had to reach. A lot of times, what we'll look at is how much something is being used and how much time it takes us, right? So on the backend of the website, I didn't go into the nitty-gritty of the website, but one of the things, when we reviewed kind of our website analytics, and who's visiting the website, and what pages are they visiting, et cetera, is if it makes sense for a staff member to create a whole webpage dedicated to a project we have, or just to provide a link to see how many folks go there, right? Because if you have a very low number of people visiting for a certain document, you either might want to move where something is on the website, or not create as much material around it explaining it, if it's just going to be a few folks talk about inbound-outbound communications. I've had folks want to talk to me about something and say there should be a whole webpage about, you know, a certain program or whatever, but there's about two people a year who contact me. So when you look at the ROI on that, it just is a better situation if you just pick up the phone and talk to them or have some exchanges, because it might be pretty specific anyway, and it's not worth, it's not worth doing that. In terms of inbound-outbound communications, oh, and then in terms of also like key performance indicators, et cetera, for the newsletter, we're slowly but surely growing our newsletter. And you look at things like if folks are opening it up, if they're unsubscribing, if you're sending certain things that people don't want, kind of keeping a pulse on that. And we don't have any hard numbers for that, partially because our audience size, we've grown our audience, and I'm really proud of it, but it's still a modest enough number. And some of this information, particularly if you're a public agency, you'll want to send regardless of if people are looking at it, because it might be an important program. So you want to provide the information, even if it might not be the most popular. I don't want to be only sending fun photos of Larkspur. People also need to know about changes in certain building structures. And then to the question of inbound-outbound communications, only on social media, and again, this is part of why I think staff at the beginning is, a lot of times, we'll just get either likes or then an email of people want to know more about a program, but there's not a whole lot of back-and-forth, two-way communication on social media. On our Nextdoor, I'll say this for the benefit of the public, because there's always a little bit of confusion as folks use Nextdoor, we purposefully turn off comments on Nextdoor, so that inbound communication would actually be to a staff member, rather than talking to the city or amongst each other on Nextdoor, because it's not the most efficient, and it can get pretty off-topic. And also, it hasn't happened in Larkspur, but in a lot of communities, you could have a very few number of bad actors, you know, get into hate speech or some kind of speech that you wouldn't necessarily want in city communications. You'd want to keep it on topic and keep it respectful, of course. So in terms of inbound communication, for particularly digital things, we limit the inbound communication back and forth, so people know to go to the city clerk for a public records request, and don't ask for it on a Facebook page, et cetera, because there's a regulatory process there.
I'd only like to add that I think the public, we should give them some credit. They really understand that when they want to have an engagement over a policy issue or quality of life issue, they know that engagement's with you, the council. So a lot of what you might characterize as inbound communication is actually through the five of you. You know, a lot of our inbound communication is very specifically, where's my document? Where's my permit? There's a pothole on my street. And I think the public has this delineation, and they understand that when they have those higher-level policy questions, or they want you to support something they're doing in the community, that they need to go to you. And for the benefit of the public, the person who serves as mayor each year is often that touch point. That's one of the jobs of being mayor, is to take in a lot of that communication.
Dan Helmer, please.
Just a quick comment, to build on what Shannon was describing, and I think I might only be able to express the appreciation of this from a council member. There's a tradition in Larkspur amongst the staff when there's a challenge that may face the city and might look to the outside as requiring bringing in outside people to pick a whole new set of challenges for consultants and other things. The staff has a tradition here of stepping up and multitasking to fill those gaps. And they do it out of appreciation for the community, and they do it out of understanding of what teamwork actually means. And this is actually a reflection on the leadership that we have here in our city with respect to our city manager, and I think Shannon, you're a key component of that. And the embracing of technology to amplify everybody's individual tasks to take on these communication challenges, I think, shows just what high quality of staff and how the creativity that they have built as a team really helps us achieve kind of things outside of what they normally do day-to-day and really take on these things to help us. And often, it often goes unnoticed, but I just want to express my gratitude for the leadership and express my appreciation for all the staff for working so hard as a team to take these things on and making us all look so...
Better.
We're addressing the challenges that we're facing in a much greater way than we would otherwise as individuals. So I just want to say that I'm so impressed and I'm so grateful for all the work that's gone into this, because I think it's not fully noticed, and I just want to say thank you.
And if I could, it's Kevin. I just want to echo those comments. You know, during the years that I've now been on city council, I am just really blown away by the level of sophistication that our staff has shown in terms of its communication, and I can't say how grateful I am to the effort that folks have been putting into this. It's really, it's terrific. It's like light years away from when even I started, and doesn't seem that long ago. Any other comments from council on this? Anything from the public?
We have received one written public comment. This comes in from Don Matheson. Why is larkspurstill.ca.us instead of .gov? Very glad to see it's no longer .org. And there's a provided link to an article called "One Simple Step Could Help Election Security: Governments Aren't Doing It." This public comment will be posted following the meeting, so that article link will be available. And this came from Don Matheson.
Oh, if I can field that one. We've actually always been .ca.us. That's been our address since the city first went on the internet. What we've done over the years is have different addresses that we've been using that were laid on top as another option. For a while before I got here, it was larkspurcityhall.org, and then shortly after I got here, we switched to cityoflarkspur.org, and we've been using that. I want to acknowledge that Ms. Matheson, through the mayor, shared her concerns about the .gov and elections issue. And we certainly may at some point down the road look at whether or not a .gov is an appropriate place for us to move the city in terms of marketing, but we've saturated the .org address quite a bit now, but it sits on top of our fundamental address, which is the city.ca.us domain. The other thing, just to remind the public, is we don't manage elections. So the vulnerabilities in the article that'll be posted, they're very interesting, but they don't actually directly apply to Larkspur, because we don't do the operations that are described in the article as being vulnerable.
Right. Okay, anything else from the public?
I'm looking for any raised hands, and I see that there is no further public comment.
Okay, terrific. This was a really wonderful presentation. I appreciate it so much. Makes me happy to hear. So let's move on to item 8.3, which is appointment to the Larkspur Heritage Preservation Board, one vacancy, and I think one candidate.
That's correct, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is really your item to decide if you'd like to appoint the candidate to the vacancy.
Yeah, so I'm going to struggle with pronouncing her last name, Sonia Ochoa-Gollant. Did I screw that up? I'm sure I did. But she was terrific, and I would wholeheartedly endorse her appointment, but I want to open it up to the council if there is a comment on that.
I also want to note, Mr. Vice Mayor, that Ms. Gollant is present in the audience, and I think she's actually raised her hand.
Oh, good, right.
I will unmute Sonia. It's your turn to speak to the council. And you'll want to unmute yourself on your end.
Oh, got it. Thank you. My name is pronounced Ochoa-Gollant. Thank you.
Gollant, sorry, I apologize.
That's all right. I just wanted to thank you all for the work that you do on behalf of the community. But otherwise, I didn't mean to speak before you did anything more than this. So I'm going to just thank you for now. Thanks.
Well, you're welcome. We're grateful that you stood up to participate. We really appreciate that. Any anything else from the council, or if we need to go to the public? But I'm ready to make a motion if we need to do that. I see Councilmember Helmer raising his hand, but you have to unmute. There you go.
I just want to thank Sonia for applying for this position, and we very much value the skill sets you bring to help our city. And I think you're going to have a good time. I think you're going to get more out of it than you put in. So I think it's going to be a very valuable enhancement to the asset of the Heritage Board, and I'm grateful for your effort, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Yes, I agree with all that. Anything else from the council? No, I don't think we have anything from the public, unless I'm wrong. So I think, I guess we need a motion, and I think I made one.
Second.
So Allison, do we need a roll call on this?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Helmer?
Yes, with gratitude.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Haroff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, that was easy. Well, welcome. We're happy to have you. Okay, so I've got to go back to my agenda.
I think she'd like to speak again, maybe. Or Sonia, did you want to speak? I couldn't tell. Your hand went up for a second.
I'll unmute Sonia if she has any comments.
Clearly, I have to learn how to use these mute things.
We all do.
Thank you very much. I look forward to serving. Good night.
I did. Thank you, Sonia. We're really grateful for your stepping up. You'll be a terrific addition to our team. Appreciate it. Okay, so I think that takes us to 8.4, which is an update on activities in response to the COVID-19 issues.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to talk a little bit with the council tonight about enforcement and promoting compliance. So enforcement of the health orders and then promoting compliance, not only with them, but with general practices. That's kind of where, as an agency, we've been shifting our view, and we've certainly been encouraged by the public health officer to put what resources we can into those two topics. So within your administrative staff, what we are doing now is gearing up for as complaints are coming into the central line that the county has set up, the ones that are in Larkspur will feel that at administrative level, and we're going to take a look and see what the nature of the complaint is and how we can deal with it. We suspect that a lot of the ones will be fielding relate to minor things, because in the first cut of what I've seen, you have people who are upset because of some activity they're seeing that was in the moment. Teenagers who are out playing on a basketball court and playing full-contact basketball, which isn't something we can go out and issue a citation for. It was something that had been happening. We have to be there and see it happening to be punitive. But what we can do is say, if this is really happening, we need to step up our game to prevent it, and we need to step up our education game to the public about what they should and shouldn't be doing. I particularly picked that example, because I would say, at least people who are bypassing the county hotline or the county email and coming straight to the city staff, it's often about activity in the park, different parks, and concern about what they're seeing, and whether it's been approved and whether it's been authorized. If you go to Piper Park, there have been authorized camps and activities for the youth that are based on the guidelines we've been receiving from the county. And we feel in general, there've been some really good practices there following what the public health officer has done, and when we've spotted minor problems, we've gone and nudged compliance out of that situation. One of the things we're dealing with now is evening and weekend pickup games of pretty much every sport imaginable occurring at Piper Park, and in full contact, and clearly with groups of folks that are from different families. So we're developing strategies to try to get folks to recognize that's not compliant, and if necessary, will transition into citing people if they continue after we've advised them that they shouldn't be doing that. But I also wanted to talk about what the Central and Police Authority specifically is doing. In fact, got some press coverage, and I didn't think the press coverage actually reflected the information we had put out to the community and to the press. The Central and Police are going to, on a fairly regular basis now, send officers that they've given some additional training and coaching. They're going to send them out into the community to observe, identify challenges, and engage folks, and talk to them about the importance of wearing a mask. and engage folks and talk to them about the importance of wearing a mask. And, you know, we've heard many different versions of statistics that all come to the same conclusion. If we're wearing masks, we have the best chance of protecting the public health. And so the press, I felt the coverage from the Marine Independent Journal and from CBS made it sound a lot more like our police were, you know, gearing up to just issue fines and citations left and right. And that's not what happened. They went out into the community to tally numbers, see how many people they were seeing that weren't wearing masks or doing some other potential violation of the public health orders and the recommended guidelines. When they could, they stopped people, had a conversation with them, identified if perhaps they were compliant. In a number of cases, they engaged folks and found out that they they were members of the same family, or they weren't wearing a mask because they're allowed to not wear a mask when they're out for a jog, and they had the mask with them to put it on when they had stopped jogging. So in a lot of the cases, it was just the quick conversation, make sure folks were aware of what was going on. And I do actually have some numbers to tell you what did happen in Larksburg. Specifically, Central Marine Police patrolled the downtown area, Piper Park, Bon Air Center, Country Mart, and then the 101 interchange bike path. And this was all yesterday. In total, they observed 303 people while they were out in our community. And they noted 30 people that were not wearing masks and that they made contact with. Of those 30 people, half of them were compliant. They understood the rules, and they were engaged in activity at that time that they're allowed to not wear a mask. And they were aware of the rules and prepared to wear a mask when they were engaged in activity that required it. So these are the folks that were out exercising. In total, they issued 15 verbal warnings that people were not in compliance. And then from those folks, they got most of them to to recognize the rules and commit to working on being compliant going forward. They handed out one mask in our community. We now have all our officers carrying masks and handing them out to folks when they need them. And when they engage in one of these discussions about the importance of wearing masks, they they offer them a mask at that time. And so I think that was very successful. There were no actual citations issued. They do keep a record of people that they warn so that they do know if they have folks that they that are repeatedly in violation, they may have to start citing them down the road. But it was not an attempt to go out and issue tickets. It was not an attempt to beat up the community. It was an attempt to engage and educate. And we'll start to see Central Marine Police doing this periodically. And it's part of it's an information campaign to really build more awareness in our community. One of the immediate effects that they were really pleased about is they noted that because they had put out the NICSOL alert that this was going to be happening, they they noticed that when people saw the police, if they weren't wearing a mask, they often put one on right away. And, you know, that's similar to the type of behavior when the police set up a very visible speed trap, where their goal isn't necessarily to issue tickets, but it's more to slow traffic down. It's to build compliance awareness. And what the chief shared with me is, a few weeks ago, that wasn't happening. If you saw a police officer, you still weren't attempting to comply with the public health order. So I think an awareness in the public that we're taking it seriously as a government agency is really valuable and will help us a long way to 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 get folks to recognize the seriousness and the need to wear a mask. With that, we continue to work on our plans and strategies on how to engage the public in our various city functions. And we're finding a lot of folks are are getting more and more comfortable engaging us electronically. I want to thank the council for understanding when I told you we were going to spend a lot of money right away to switch the entire workforce to laptops. That's now been complete. One of the tools that everyone in our staff now has to get used to is we have a electronic version of our phone on our laptop. So one of the challenges we were finding is the difficulty of working from home and then trying to engage the public on the phone could sometimes be awkward. So now each staff member can actually be working either at home or in the office. And if they choose to, they can use a digital version of their desk phone from the laptop so that they can call somebody, and the recipient of the call will perceive it as coming from the the city's voice system. So that's a big improvement for us. We're really pleased with that. And with that, Mr. Vice Mayor, turning it back to council.
Just just on that last point, is that something that's available to us as council members?
Well, you don't have phone numbers with us, but it's probably something we could talk about. I have to check and see how many phone lines we have available.
It'd be, it'd be nice to have. Any other comments from council members? Councilmember Homer has his hand up.
I have a question, really. And it's it's really regarding how we can better create an education message to the community. And this is based on a personal experience I had at Piper Park yesterday. I try to go there to get in an hour walk daily, just to get exercise and get my heart rate up. And this was around 3:30 in the afternoon. I normally try to pick a time when there aren't a lot of people in the park. But I found myself on the path, and I found myself with a, looking at a group of young, all male bike riders. There were probably 20 of them. I would guess their age was around 12 or 13. And they all unmasked, riding about 18 inches from each other. Obviously, having fun and, you know, you know, kids are kids, and we don't want to try to ruin their experience, especially with the constraints put upon them these days. But I found myself in a position where they were actually intentionally surrounding me while they were riding and all kind of relishing the experience of getting in close to me. And I I found myself getting emotional and asking them with some intention to get away from me. And that seemed to not work. It seemed to actually aggravate the situation. And they got, they were kind of grinning and hooting and hollering and thought it was fun to to do this. So I wonder what kind of message can we get out to the either the the parents, or I don't even know what channels we have to help with this. But I think there's a lack of seriousness that needs to be, or a seriousness that needs to be conveyed so that this doesn't develop into an unintentional problem larger than what I experienced. Because I found myself actually I was stunned at the lack of concern that that these young men had, young gentlemen had for my health and for themselves, actually. So I, my, it's a question, and I wonder what we can do to change this.
No, I don't have a good answer for you, Councilmember Homer. No, I think between the state, the county, and the cities, there's a wealth of information being put out. But at the end of the day, particularly when it comes to children and teenagers, we we need one more segment of the population to participate in that education and its parents. And and that's really, the incident you're describing, that's what it speaks to me about is is that the parents may not have communicated to their children what you'd hope they do, which is even if their family has chosen to have a particular set of rules and comfort around the situation we're in, that's not where everyone else is. I tell our staff, I tell my son, that you have to assume that the person you're engaged with is less comfortable than you. That's the best way to be sure you always behave in a way that's going to be respectful to the other person. Because it is really challenging.
Well, I just want to also say, I was masked, and when they were 50 yards from me, I started asking them to stay away. And they took that as a challenge. And I I really was taken aback, and I was actually scared when surrounded by that many people, no matter what their age was. And I, I really didn't know what to do because I certainly wasn't going to physically act to to do anything to make them change their behavior. But I, I just, I would hate for somebody, I would hate for somebody else to go through this. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I see that kind of behavior all the time when I go out for my runs and I'm trying to get exercise as well. There are limits on what we can do as a city in order to manage those kinds of social expectations. The best I think we can do is to set examples. Anything else on this, on this particular topic? Any comments from the public?
I see one raised hand. Kevin Carroll, it's your turn for a public comment.
I too, like Councilman Hilmer, go out about an hour every day. In my case, it's down here to the Cordermadera Marsh and the path. And confronting people like this is, can be dangerous, as you see the stories in the media of people being attacked for asking others to wear masks. The only thing I can recommend that I found somewhat effective is not to be confrontational, but to pull out my cell phone and record them. I mean, never need the recording, but God forbid, something happens to somebody else farther down the path, I'll at least have a photograph of who the people might be that were involved.
All right, I'm looking for any further public comment, and I see none.
Okay, unless there's anything further from the council, let's move on to 8.5, which is the financial update.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. Just a few coronavirus-related items to share with you. One is, the state is finally now providing guidance on how we should document our costs that may be reimbursable under the CARES Act. So Administrative Services Director Kathy Orme and I are going through that paperwork. We've been carefully keeping an itemized list of everything we think is eligible, and I think we'll easily justify the $150,000 that's been set aside for Larksburg that were eligible for that money. So we've received one of the six allocations already, and we expect to receive another allocation here very shortly. The other, I think, important news is that the the public health officer, Dr. Matt Willis, has signaled that hotels will be allowed to be open. And as I've related to you, transit occupancy tax has been decimated during this time for our one hotel, the courtyard by Marriott. Hotels have been allowed to be open for certain people, essential workers and other folks who have a documented need to be in a hotel. This would be allowing travelers to to come to Larksburg and stay in the hotel. And I understand that that's that's coming shortly, and that'll be a big benefit to us financially.
That's great. Any questions?
I think that's really
Okay, any questions for the city manager on the on that? Anything from the public?
Looking for any raised hands or emailed public comments. And I see that there is no public comment.
Okay. So that brings us to item number nine, which is adjournment. Which brings it back to me, and I hope my my internet connection works because it's been going on and off all night long. I'm sorry, Dan Hilmer, do you have a?
Just a quick expression of my gratitude for all the city employees and staff and everybody that does the hard work every day of keeping things going during this tough situation. I, I don't think this is a full appreciation of all the hard work and effort and showing up is 90% of success. And I think that I just want to express my deep gratitude for everybody that works for the city and the management and the team we have. I think it's, we're so, so grateful. Thank you.
And I cannot tell you how much I agree with that. It's just, it's wonderful that we have such a great team. I'm very appreciative. Anybody else before we adjourn? So with that, sorry?
Allison, have a great night, everybody.
Wait a minute, I got to adjourn because I'd like to adjourn with a couple of comments. I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Gary Koffer. Mr. Koffer was the construction superintendent for the Bon Air Bridge project. He passed unexpectedly last Wednesday on August 12, 2020, after collapsing in the parking lot of the job site where he was working for our city. He worked closely with members of our Public Works staff. His employer passed along thoughts for us to share. Gary was a leader of the Bon Air Bridge construction effort from the start for Golden State Bridge. Every day, he assured that the work progressed while always being cognizant of the safety of our community, the workers and the environment. And I personally appreciated, personally appreciate the leadership that he showed in managing that project because I went by there almost every day. Sometimes the needs of the project and those of the community appear to clash, but Gary always did his best to advance the project while disrupting the community as little as possible. He did this with vigor and a smile at all times. Gary was a professional builder. He was a pleasure to work with and will surely be missed by all of those he touched. And at a personal level, I just want to express my appreciation for for Gary and for all the folks that he has been or had led in working towards the successful completion of that project and other projects in our community. And I'm sorry for the loss. So I want to adjourn tonight's meeting in his honor. Can I have a motion?
So moved. And I want to also express my personal sympathy for the family's loss in this tough situation.
Yeah, no, it's yeah. Okay. I think I lost my internet. So have a good evening. Good evening, everyone.